Hi Roxanne, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, I guess somebody just needs to start the video if you want me on. If not, this is fine.
You're good.
We'll call this meeting to order for Thursday, September 24th. Can I have verification of the agenda posting?
Good evening. The agenda was posted on September 24, 2020 at 6:00 PM at City Hall, which is 375 Fifth Street.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Hughboy, would you like to lead us in the...
Most certainly.
...to the flag of the United States of America. To the world, to stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask for a rule call?
Commissioner Stevens.
Present.
Commissioner Hughboy.
Present.
Chairperson Munzer.
Here.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Thank you. Approval of August 27, 2020 minutes? Do we have a chance to review the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The approval of the minutes pass. Communications from the public on items not listed on the agenda. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any items not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. When the Planning Commission calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name, address for the record, and speak to the commission. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Please note that state law prohibits the Planning Commission from discussing or taking actions on any items not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards for items not on the agenda?
I see no speaker cards in person or on Zoom.
All right, we'll move on to the public hearing. First item on the agenda, tentative map 2020-2. Do we have the staff report on that item?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting tentative map approval for the subdivision of an approximately 17-acre site consisting of five lots and two 15 lots for the construction of a multi-tenant shopping center located in the general commercial zoning district of the city of Hollister. The entitlements being considered tonight consist of the tentative map only. Individual Saturn architectural reviews in the form of commercial buildings will have come before you already and will continue to come before you at a later time to review site orientation, parking, landscaping, and so forth. The entitlements for tonight are only for the tentative map. As you know, the property previously received tentative map approval in June, on June 29, 2017. The applicant, the application or the approval has since expired, and the applicant is here tonight to essentially get another approval and finalize the process for a final map subdivision to continue the process with the engineering department and get that finalized and approved for the finalization of the 15 lots. In regards to the details, we do have the applicant who is here and is present and is willing to explain if elaborate if needed. There is a parcel map also, tentative map example with you and also on the screen, which I will go through in just a little bit. Parcels 1 through 9 would be located south of East Park Street, west of Highway 25 bypass, and north of the existing LaSchwab and Walgreen shopping centers. Parcels 10 through 15 would be located north of East Park Street, west of Highway 25 bypass, and east of Prospect. Parcels 1 through 2, if you can look in the screen, located more towards the western side and as mentioned earlier, south of East Park Street. And they will consist of, parcels 1 would consist of a 1.91-acre site and parcel 2 would consist of a 1.62-acre site. Parcels 1 and 2 have previously also received entitlements for a 71,559 square foot building with multi-tenants for future commercial uses. The applicant is here as mentioned in case you have questions regarding potential tenants. Parcels 1 and 2 are located to, towards the west of the project site, south of East Park Street. Parcel 3 is, consists of 1.2 acres and it's mostly the, an area for parking within the subdivision. Parcel 4 consists of 0.82 acres and if you recall previously, that parcel received a Saturn architectural approval for a restaurant use. It's a future use of a Denny's restaurant. Parcel 5 consists of 0.92 acres and that is the site, if you drive by there, you will see and previously came before you, Saturn architectural approval for a multi-tenant use. It's currently the Chipotle use and future land use for Verizon as well. Parcel number 6, closer to State Highway 25, again, south of East Park Street, consists of 1.41 acres and it is the site of an existing building where Smash Burger is currently located at the northern end and Aspandental at the southern end of the building. Parcel number 7 is 0.63 acres and that too is a future commercial building. Parcel number 8 consists of 0.69 acres, mostly parking as described on the tentative map. And parcel, or lot number 9, parcel number 9, 1.18 acre and again is described as mostly parking in the tentative map. Now the parcels to the north of East Park Street, consists of parcels 10 through 15 as described. And parcel number 10, 1.03 acres and that's more towards the east, closer to the Highway 25 bypass. And there has been a restaurant building entitled but not yet built on that parcel. Parcel number 11 consists of 0.74 acres and there has been a car wash entitled there but not yet built. Parcel number 12 consists of 1.99 acres and as you see in the screen, it's mostly parking. Parcel 13 is 1.28 acres for future buildings that has not yet received Saturn architectural approval, will come before you at a later time. Parcel number 14, 0.62 acres and parcel number 15 is 1.36 acres. And that is the site that is, the building has been constructed, not yet open, but it's for medical dialysis. It's been approved and constructed and nearing its opening date. The property owner, Hawkins Companies, previously received tentative map approval as indicated before. The applicant desires to obtain approval of the tentative, of this tentative map for the same project to be able to proceed with the final map and complete its subdivision. This is the naryal site of the project. I think we're all familiar with it. One of the, one of the things that we emphasize here as we did back in 2017 is that interconnectivity, essentially, somebody can, from Walgreens would be able to eventually, when all the site is developed, be able to go all the way through Smash Burger, all the way to East Park Street, and then from there eventually and back. So that's one of our general plan policies to have interconnectivity, which is one of the things that the, one of various things that the commercial applicant has been able to meet and exceed for this project. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission review the applicant's request, receive all written oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion. Adopt a resolution to approve tentative map number 2020-2, subject to the conditions contained in the draft resolution, and that resolution would be 2020-18. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question on their application. They have a sheet T3. I know we're open for discussion. It's just the tentative map.
Correct.
Sheet T3 shows street profiles. Is that open for discussion this evening or is that part of the site and architectural review?
We can, we can discuss. It would come, it would come back, it would come back as Saturn architectural as well as we go specifically, but if you have questions on that, we can definitely discuss.
Just have some comments.
Sure. Yeah, the city engineer has a few things to address.
Yeah, this application tonight is really just to establish, reestablish the timeline. Just by a mere oversight, the tentative map expired. If they would have come back just slightly before the expiration, it would have been an automatic extension. So nothing is really changing. It's just reestablishing the timelines.
But when the tentative map expires, isn't that, we can still kind of just review it again or is, I know this has been approved previously, but I just wanted to, I was looking at the the street profiles, just wanted to make a general comment. That's why I just wanted to discuss that before I make my comment.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Stevens, did you have any questions for staff?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no additional questions for staff, I'd like to go ahead and open this up for a public hearing at 6:12. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
We have no speakers in the audience. You do, you would like to speak? Okay, please. Afterwards, if you could just fill out a speaker card, that'd be great.
Brittany Elliott with Hawkins Companies. She has a few slides as well that she would like to share with the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Good evening. As Abraham said, my name is Brittany Elliott. I'm with Hawkins Companies, 855 West Broad Street, Suite 300, Boise, Idaho, 83702. And we're here tonight just to request approval of tentative map 2020-2. And the first thing I like to do is say thank you, Abraham, for that fantastic presentation. I will not go through most of that information again. However, I want to say thank you for all your staff's work getting us here tonight. As you discussed, the application is for the Hollister Farms project, which is located between Highway 25, Park Street, and Trace Pinos Road. Hawkins Companies is both the owner and the applicant. So the tentative map that you see before you tonight that we've submitted is actually the exact same map that was from 2017, previously approved by the commission. We have read to, read and agreed to all the terms and conditions that were contained within that resolution. Since then, we've done some development on the project. You may have been there. Here's a couple photos. You've got the Smash Burger, the Shavey's, Salad Works, Aspandental, Chipotle, Verizon, Satellite Healthcare, which is actually currently under construction. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight, and we respectfully request approval of the 2020-2 application, and we're here for any questions. And I brought the guys for the hard questions, so I'll take the easy ones. I think I'm under my three minutes, too.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Stevens, did you have any questions for the applicant?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional speaker cards on this item?
Looks like that's it.
Okay, if we have no additional questions for the applicant or speaker cards, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:15.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
And I, I like what you're doing out there. I like this well-designed development. I appreciate that. The only comment I make, and as we're going through our new general plan update, and we talk about street, streetscapes and street design, and I, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a civil engineer, but I would call Park Avenue a minor arterial. It connects residential, commercial, shopping centers of the like. The design guidelines that we had in the old general plan prefer to have the planning strip between the sidewalk and the curb. Now, since there's a precedent that's already established out there with Park Street, it makes sense to carry out that existing designed curb sidewalk planning strip. And as you drive, as I drive down Monterey Street, an older street coming to City Hall, I notice that you have curb planning strip sidewalk backed as a pedestrian protection buffer, and it looks really nice. I like that look. So just want to keep that in mind as we go through these projects, plan developments, tentative maps. If we can somehow identify, maybe this is part of the new general plan process, but identify those areas where we can embrace the curb landscape strip and then sidewalk in certain areas, I think that would be, certainly be very helpful to beautify our city, and that was the comment I wanted to make.
Comment noted. Commissioner Hughboy, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughboy. Any other comments from the commissioners? All right, if there's no additional comments, what's a pleasure of the commission on this item?
Mr. Chair, let's see, I would like to make a motion. If there's any additional further discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt tentative map 2020-2 and approve PC resolution number...
2020-18.
2020-18. Thank you, Abraham.
You're welcome.
And the conditions in the draft resolution.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? I'll make the second on that item. There's a motion, second, further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Congratulations on the tentative map. Moving on to the second item on the agenda, minor subdivision 2020-3. Do we can have the staff report on that item?
Absolutely, Chairman Munzer. The applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately 3.25-acre site into four parcels consisting of a range from 0.6, 0.662 acres to 0.698 acres. And also have a dedication of 0.132-acre parcel, parcel A, along the west property line adjacent to San Felipe Road, and dedicate a 1.3 point, 1.310-acre parcel, parcel B, for future road improvements along the south property line. In addition, the applicant is also requesting to the creation of an adjacent 13.157-acre remainder parcel. This located, this, this project site located in the North Gateway, which is a commercial district, zoning district of the city of Hollister. Want to make clear that no development is being proposed tonight. Tonight is only for the subdivision of the existing parcel. Any potential sub, any potential building proposals would come at a later time in the form of a Saturn architectural review and before the Planning Commission consistent with the North Gateway commercial regulations of the city of Hollister code. As you can see on your map and on the screen, the parcels that are in question right now are adjacent to San Felipe Road to the south of the Highway 25 bypass and along Pacific Way, which would be on the southern part of the project site. Regarding access, access right now, you know, for, for future commercial development would be off of Pacific Way to the commercial site. There is no access from Highway 25 bypass. That is a Caltrans requirement that prohibits access on to private, private properties along, along the bypass. And then the other access that is being proposed and the city is recommending or is okay with is a right, right in only for the future commercial development of this site between lots 2 and 3. So as northbound traffic is on San Felipe Road, vehicles are able to make a right turn onto this future road. However, there would be no right out from here. We just feel that it's too close to the intersection of Highway 25 and San Felipe. However, pretty much all access onto the future commercial center would be through the future improvements of Pacific Way located towards the southern, southern property line of the project site. There is currently a median on San Felipe Road that bisects the north and south traffic. And so as vehicles are heading out on the future development of Pacific Way, this time, you know, if, at this time would be right, you know, right out, only right in, right out. There is currently a study that's being done to analyze potential, a potential intersection control at San Felipe and Pacific Way. So that's currently being analyzed. Eventually that'll get to, to us. We're working with them as well. And eventually it'll go before the city council for an ultimate decision of whether, whether it would be a roundabout or a traffic, traffic signal. So that, that would be required to be improved there. The applicant, in this case, there is a condition, condition number 60, which would require a fair share, per unit share of the, of the cost for the improvement of that intersection. So that's being, that's being analyzed and considered and should be going before the city council once we get the recommendations from the traffic analysis. Before going into the recommendation for approval, we do want to bring your attention to a few conditions of approval that the city engineer and I discussed with the applicant's engineer, Mr. Alan Andret. And so we just want to bring them to your attention briefly. Condition number one addresses the timeline for when the minor subdivision would expire if they don't submit properly to the city engineer to make it into a parcel map and record it. So essentially, it's a two-year approval process. And so we just want to add a new sentence, the new third sentence to condition number one, which states on letter, I put it in the screen in red font. And it indicates it is the applicant's responsibility to submit the required tentative parcel map, parcel map easements and all supportive documents to the city of Hollister in a timely manner to comply with state law. Just wanted to make sure that that language was included in that condition. And then also, condition number one indicates that the approval expires in two years. And it also states that for an effective plan review period, the applicant shall submit a parcel map package for the review of the city engineer no later than March 24, 2022. Essentially, it's six months prior to the two-year expiration date. So all we want to do there is just change the word "shall" and put "should" because the expiration date is actually two years. And if we put "shall," it makes it seem like it's an expiration date is a year and a half from now. And it really isn't. It's just a really hard recommendation on our part that they really should submit at least six months in advance of the expiration date. That's it for condition number one. Condition number 13, very briefly, this is not for a development at this time. It's just for subdivision. And condition number 13 is a standard condition that we indicate in subdivisions that, that the property owners show stripe every two years, the parking stalls and so forth. So since this is not an actual development, sometimes we do bring in actual developments with the subdivision. But in this case, because it's just a subdivision, it's no development is being proposed, all we would like to add to condition number 13 is as, as applicable, the applicant should maintain a restripe. So obviously would not apply to them at this time. Condition number 16, currently, what's, what's crossed out on the screen is what's stated in your resolution and the draft resolution. And what's stated is that the applicant should record a reciprocal access easement amongst the subdivided lots and the adjacent lots to the project site as reviewed and determined by the city engineer. Just want to clarify some language on that condition and the language that we are proposing and that we've discussed with the applicant's engineer is indicated in red font. And that's essentially that the applicant should note on the map that interior private reciprocal parcel easement shall be reserved on the parcel map for use by the parcels served. Upon development of any one of the parcels, the reserved easements will be included in a shared easement agreement that defines maintenance and operations as well as amendment protocol as other parcels are developed. Just to clarify and expand on that condition. Condition number 23 indicates, it talks about soils report and there, there may be, when soils reports are required at certain intervals or certain, at a certain stage of the parcel map, so we just wanted to be clear and at the end of that condition, just indicate as required by the city engineer. So when they come in and submit, they'll get with the city engineer and the city engineer will indicate to them when that soils report would be required. Condition number 27 talks about, it's a standard condition, talks about drainage report, and all we want to add there is at the very beginning just a note indicating by when we would need that drainage report, just prior to any site development or grading. That's all we're adding to it. And condition number 39, it's a non-vehicular access strip condition. And essentially, the condition right now just indicates that the subdivider should dedicate a one-foot non-vehicular access strip along all streets. And so we want to be a little bit more clear, specific to this project, and we're adding the red font, which indicates the entire San Felipe Road frontage less allocations as determined by the city of Hollister. And also a non-vehicular access strip along the entire Pacific Way frontage less allocations as determined by the city of Hollister. Just for clarification purposes. And finally, condition number 44, it talks about materials that should be submitted in preparation of a submitted to the city council. And so this minor subdivisions do not go to the city council. Minor subdivisions are parcel maps that are approved administratively once they get entitled by the Planning Commission and all the, the city engineer along with staff ensures that all the conditions have been met before it gets recorded. And so with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the applicant's request, receive all written oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion. Adopt a resolution approving minor subdivision 2020-3, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution with said amendments to conditions 1, 13, 16, 23, 27, 39, and the removal of condition number 44 as stated. The applicant has been working for very, various months with, with the city of Hollister along with his traffic engineers, civil engineers, his architects, and he is actually here as well. And for any questions that you may have, and we're also here to try to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Abraham?
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Any questions for staff?
I'm just curious, what is a non-vehicular one-foot access strip?
My understanding of it, and Danny is here, our city engineer as well, is a condition that is included to make sure that if there is going to be no access onto that road, then we want to make sure that easement is indicated, lest the areas where access would be provided. And then that would be determined by the City of Hollister with the consultation of the city engineer. Want to elaborate on that, Danny?
No, Abraham's correct.
Okay.
It's just an imaginary line that, don't cross this line.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you. Thank you.
Got a question? So I remember we had some, like, a local general plan covering that area. Does that have any, anything to do with this?
Yeah, Commissioner Henderson, I believe what you're referring to is the area in orange on the screen, which is an area that consists of 120 acres that is essentially between Santa Ana Road all through the, through north, north, all along the Highway 25 Bypass, all the way to San Felipe, lest the area covered in teal color on the screen, which is a 3.25 acre site that we are currently discussing before you. And so this potential, this particular site has actually been with the City of Hollister. The 120-acre site that's within the master plan area, that's with the Chapel Road master plan. And that actually was pre-zoned and meant various of those parcels, including the adjacent 15-acre parcel that's actually also now owned by Mr. Villa, who's present here, same applicant, same property owner, is actually tied to that master plan. So, and Mr. Villa could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the only reason why he's not moving forward with the subdivision of that actual additional 15-acre site, or closer to 20 acres, I'm sorry, is because it's still tied to that master plan. So he just wants to get going and at least subdivide this separate parcel that's adjacent to that other parcel that he owns that's not in the master plan so he can get something going for future commercial development.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome, Commissioner Henderson.
Commissioner Stevens, did you have any questions for staff?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, if we have no further questions for staff, I'd like to go ahead and open this up to the public hearing. And we'll open it up at 6:32. Any speaker cards on this item?
It doesn't look like anyone would like to speak in the audience. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? No one on Zoom? That wraps it up.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close this down at 6:32 and bring it back here for discussion. Any further discussion from the commissioners?
I have no comments at this time, Mr. Chair.
No comments.
No comments.
Any, I'm sorry, was that?
I just said I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. If there's no comments, what's the pleasure of the commission on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt minor subdivision 2020-3, approve planning resolution, PC resolution, Abraham?
2020-19.
2020-19 with the amendments to Conditions Number 1, 13, 16, 23, 27, 39, and the removal of Condition 44 and the rest of the conditions in the draft resolution.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations on the project.
Been looking forward to, you see, and coming back for the rest of the master plan.
Okay, moving on to item number three, Site and Architectural Review 2020-13. Staff report, please.
Yes, we'll have Adeli provide the staff report. Thank you, Adeli.
Good evening, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval of the master sign program to allow for the construction and placement of two freestanding signs in the shape of airplane wings located at the intersection of Airport Drive and San Felipe Road of the property located at 60 Airport Drive. The signs are intended to be the initial stages of a comprehensive master sign program and overall branding for the Hollister Municipal Airport. The signs will replace two existing low-scale freestanding signs. It's a little hard to see on the location map, but it is that little orange dot and kind of towards the center there. The existing two freestanding signs, or excuse me, the two freestanding signs are proposed, will replace the existing low-scale freestanding signs with a sign designed to replicate airplane wings. The new freestanding signs will be 12 feet, while the current signs are approximately three feet in height. The existing and proposed signs are at the entrance facing north and southbound vehicular traffic on San Felipe Road. The design of the two freestanding signs is a replication of airplane wings. The signs will have the Hollister Municipal Airport logo emphasized and spaced for four tenants. Each tenant name will be at minimum eight inches in height. As of now, there's only one proposed tenant to be located on the airport wing signs. And the airport will continue to work to include more tenants on the sign. As mentioned, this will be the initial stages of an overall branding upgrade for the airport. The base of the airport wings is circular and one foot in height and contains a flagpole low light to illuminate the sign at night. Additionally, the base contains six blue taxi lights for aesthetic purposes. The wings will have lights on the wingtip edge, which are utilized for collision avoidance purposes. Excuse me, it's a little hard to tell, but they are at the top edge of them. The existing site is not landscaped, but contains decorative rock lining to the entrance of the airport. The area is unable to be landscaped due to two culverts that are directly next to the sign area. There is a fence along the property located directly behind the existing and proposed signs, leaving only a small circular area open to allow for the placement of the signs. This area varies due to the size for both sign locations. The area is similar to a half-moon, with the widest area being approximately nine feet for the north-facing sign and 12 feet for the sign area facing south. The placement or replacement of a sign in this location does not comply with the setbacks required for freestanding signs as it will vary between four to six feet for both locations. However, this is the only location available for a freestanding sign on the property. And due to the shape and vegetation of the location, this is the best feasible area. The signs will be approximately 50 feet from each other, separated by the driveway. The need for two signs is to have each sign face northbound and southbound lanes of San Felipe Road. The sign also is not in compliance with the requirement Section 1720-050, subsection C4M, which requires the freestanding signs to be low-scale monument-type signs as the proposal is for a large-scale sign for aesthetic considerations. For these reasons, the master sign program will allow exceptions to the setback and the monument-type requirements for the installation of the two signs. The City of Hollister Planning Commission may, in accordance with Section 1712-040, subsection H1, allow for an exception to the regulations otherwise provided in Chapter 1720, signs as part of the master sign program to better integrate the sign with the existing project site. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission review the applicant's request, review all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion. Adopt a resolution approving Site and Architectural Review 2020-13 for a master sign program, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
The material of these monument signs, I know the signs by van, they do really good work. There's going to be some graffiti type of prevention coating on it, I guess?
So the sign material is going to be made out of aluminum, and then the base of it is concrete.
The, I'm sorry, above the concrete, what is that material?
Aluminum.
Aluminum, okay. So if by chance there is graffiti, there should be some type of...
We have the director of the airport, who's also online, and he can address a little bit more of that. I'm sure there's some type of coating that can be placed on it. And Mike Chambliss, our airport manager, is also with his hand up. As soon as you open up the public hearing, I'm sure he'll be able to address that if you like. Thank you, Commissioner. You're welcome.
Okay, if there's no additional questions from the commissioners for staff, I'd like to go ahead and open it up for the public at 6:40. Do we have any speaker cards?
Ms. Helsstock, do you have anything to say? No one in the audience or no one on Zoom, I don't think. Oh, we have. I'm sorry, Mr. Chambliss.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the consideration of this item. Commissioner Gibbois, specifically on the graffiti, airport staff has appropriate materials and equipment to remove any graffiti that's placed on the aluminum or the concrete. And since we do have staff based there every day of the week, and they would pass it on their way into the job site, I assure you, any graffiti that gets applied would be very short-lived.
Thank you, Michael. I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this down at 6:41 for the public hearing portion and bring it back for discussion for the commissioners.
I'd just like to say that I like the design. I commend Mr. Chambliss and the sign maker for coming up with this design. I know it's going to be a great improvement out there. And signs are things to come for our airport, right? Welcome to our Hollister Airport.
Yes.
Yeah, very nice job on this design.
Nice job.
Okay, with that said, what's the pleasure of the commission on this item?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, okay, we adopt Site and Architectural Review 2020-13 and approve PC resolution.
2020-20.
2020-20 with the findings in the draft resolution.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations on the project.
Good job. Looks great.
Thanks, Adeli.
Okay, moving on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, is code enforcement going to address this, or I can address it if you like?
Mr. Prado, if you don't mind addressing it, the code enforcement staff was unable to come tonight.
No, not a worry, absolutely. Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, thank you. This item before you, under new business, was provided to you in the form of a memo. Little bit of background, in 2009 approximately, the City of Hollister did an overhaul of the pretty much entire zoning this code of the Hollister Municipal Code to be consistent with, at that time, newly adopted general plan. General plan was adopted in December of 2005. And so then the city worked very diligently to update the code to be in conformance with the general plan. As part of that major overhaul that the City of Hollister did, one of the things that occurred was that previously accessory structures to a property in the form of, for the use of a storage or whatnot, were allowed to be placed on the property as long as there was a five-foot setback. So with this change, what happened was that in order for it to have a little bit more clearance, the city decided to include it as a 10-foot setback and more clearance because, you know, at the same times, usually for accessory structures, there can be storage of even gasoline or products that can be combustible. And so the greater the setback, the better chance of it being away from the home in case of a fire or whatnot. However, the Hollister Municipal Code's requirements for accessory storage, better yet, the California Building Code in consultation with the building official, is a five-foot setback. And so the reason why this is being brought before you, staff has had multiple discussions with different departments. And the code enforcement office has recently have been, not just recently, but over the years, have received many, many compliance orders, have sent many compliance orders for existing buildings, accessory buildings that are within that 10-foot setback. Maybe not, maybe not more than 10 feet, but maybe like five feet. They still have five feet, but not at 10 feet. And so therefore, they're out of compliance. And one major reason as well is that, as you know, now we have been approving a lot of more, a lot more single-family homes that have smaller backyards. And when they inquire, which is essentially on a daily basis, we get inquiries regarding accessory structures approximately. And a lot of the times when we say that the minimum requirement is 10 feet away from the main house, it makes it infeasible for people to build. All we're talking about is a 10 by 12. 10 by 12, no bigger than 15 feet in height, no electrical, no plumbing, and no mechanical. And so, and so if it is going to be bigger than 10 by 12, then it really, then it should be, you know, 10 feet or more away from the main house. So the request for tonight, and this then, the code enforcement recently actually did a survey of the city and sent out over, just recently, and not counting over the years, just in the last few weeks, over 130 code compliances because of existing accessory structures that are within the 10-feet setback and are just, you know, 10 by 12 or smaller. So the hope is that we come before you and request that we actually included a draft resolution ordinance actually indicating that it would be okay to bring it back to the five-foot setback as long as it is 120 square feet or smaller and no bigger than 15 feet in height. And with, in the form of a consensus, if the planning commission agrees, we would then, next step would be to take it to the city council for ordinance adoption. I'm pretty sure that I covered it all. Brian, if I missed anything, let me know. But I think that was the gist of it, Brian.
Abraham, you did a great job, and I appreciate Nick Godine in the code enforcement office to put this memo together. As you know, and as Mr. Prado stated, our backyards are becoming smaller. And we want new homeowners to be able to enjoy their backyard with the space that they have. And as you know, space is a commodity at many of our properties here in the city. And so working with the code to permit people to have storage facilities in their backyard on smaller lots is really a win for the whole community. So that's where this idea came from, is we had a lot of enforcement measures. And it was apparent that people are doing the best they can to fit structures in their backyards. And so this is that first step to bring this eventually to the city council. But we want to bring it to you two first here, so.
And I believe that structures, accessory structures, 120 square feet or less are exempt from a building permit.
That is absolutely correct. As long as there's no electrical, plumbing, or mechanical, they are exempt. You are correct.
It's interesting that, you know, you can have an accessory structure when you, I know that we have Charlie and Chief are here. And I'm sure they're concerned about fire rating issues. But when you have two structures on a property line, you draw the imaginary property line between the structures, and you want to maintain a certain distance.
Right.
But for a small structure without an electrical. Were there any concerns from the fire department regarding this?
Thank you, Chief.
Sorry to put you on the spot there, Charlie.
No, it's okay. I'm Charlie with the Hollister Fire Department and the Fire Marshal for Hollister and San Bernardino County. No, I think this is okay. You know, this is a great plan, it's a great compromise. Theoretically, we want to be able to get into within 100 feet, 360 around the structure. And with, these lots are so small, we're able to get hose and get in there.
And with, these lots are so small, we're able to get hose and get in there in between pretty quick, right off the engines on the hose, so it's a good plan, it's a good deal.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that.
I'm sorry, what did you say that the current setback is for one of these storage?
The accessory structures?
From like a fence or?
So from a property line, it's five feet from the fence essentially. To the main house is ten feet, ten feet away. And actually, to the property line, if it is a hundred and twenty square feet or less, it can be, it can be a little closer, actually up until eighteen inches to the property line. If it's just, if it's just an accessory structure of a hundred and twenty square feet and eight feet tall, one of these just sheds, if it's over eight feet in height, up to fifteen, then it would have to be three feet away at minimum. And, you know, if there's any type of electric or anything, then minimum of five feet. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know, I know, if you get closer to three feet to the property line, that you cannot have any unprotected openings.
That is correct. Yeah, and that's one thing, it's funny because building official Greg Johnson was going to be here, but he indicated that he's on call in case we have any questions. But he did indicate that David Huway would probably be able to answer those questions. He actually called him by name, he said, I'm sure David Huway would be able to answer, but.
If you come into my office, you see coat books laying all over the place. Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So are you, we're just after consensus from the commissioners, we're not?
That is correct, Chairperson Munzer, at this time, if there are no other questions, what we would like is if you can ask the commission in the form of a consensus if they are okay with the staff bringing this item forward as an ordinance to the city council.
I don't see anything against it.
I'm good with it.
Very well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on to old business. Is there any old business?
No, no old business.
Any planning department reports?
No reports at this time, thank you.
Any planning commission reports?
Yes, I do have a report regarding our next GPAC number two meeting, October sixth, right?
That is correct.
And I put that out there to the general public too.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll get good participation on Zoom, I'll be here in person.
That's great.
And I'm looking forward to that.
It's going to be a good one.
Taking the next step.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huway, can I just ask a question? Are they going to present at that meeting what came out of the different public, I guess they were called public forums or public meetings that they had? I guess they were focus groups, I guess is what they were.
You know, Roxanne, Commissioner Stevens, I did not participate in the visioning sessions by the general public, but I printed out about, I don't know how many pages. And three-hole punched them and I'm going through it this weekend. I've been going through it, I'm getting caught up with all the comments that were made and appreciate the general public for participating in that process. And so, yes, that'll be, I'm sure that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
That is correct, Commissioner Huway, you got it. Yes, I will be.
Looking forward to that, thank you.
Thank, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Huway. Okay, next meeting is Thursday, October twenty-second at six PM. With that being said, I'd make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You guys have a good evening.
And good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.